...an answer. And that'll be a two-minute here, and if he wants to speak, then it's two minutes over here. And if he wants to rebut that, I'll be back to two minutes over here. And he might want to rebut that person's... And then we'll do maybe five rounds of that back and forth. And then we'll cut it off and start the next question, but I'll keep count there. But before we do that, a word from our sponsor, Mr. Juan Garcia.
Like I said at the last town hall, I've been called a lot of names, but never a sponsor. Hey, first of all, thanks for joining us today, tonight. I really appreciate it. Uh, thanks to the candidates for joining us. To me, it's a great opportunity to continue to fine-tune the message. Uh, maybe you forgot to say something at the last session. And maybe you might even convince somebody out there to vote for you, or potentially donate and support you. So it's all good, and I definitely appreciate it. And of course, last but not least in my thanks is joining the team. They've done a phenomenal job in putting these events together. And we're very happy. So for the last couple of years, I'd say four-plus years, I've been going to the city council and have stood in front of the dice and spoken, spoken on various issues that have been affecting the community. And as CCIA, we are, as everybody knows, or shouldn't know, we're non-partisan. We focus on the issues, what's affecting us. Crime, 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 right? I did a ride-along last Friday with a police officer, and he said, "The days when people adulterate you to shoot each other." It happens. But he says seventy percent of the crime is with juveniles. And I'm saying to him, "What in the heck is going on here? And why isn't happening?" I've seen the trend in the council. Four years ago, we had a very different council that was far off to the left, and it has slowly, slowly gravitated towards the middle, more moderate approach. And the reason I say that is because the council is supposed to represent everybody, not just the people that voted for you, or the folks that paid for you, or anything like that. If you don't represent everybody, then you're doing them a disservice. And I think sometimes our councillors forget what they're supposed to be doing. And you can see it. You can see it there. Before I get off the stage, I'm gonna leave you with this. This was from the Crime Court Corrections and Justice Committee meeting at Duke Black's about a month ago, give or take, at UNM, at NMSU. And this is from Senator Cervantes, when people were asking and talking about crime in Las Cruces. And they said, "Hey, you know, why don't you change the laws? Why don't you do whatever?" And again, this is Cervantes's quote, not mine. Because he said, "We have the same laws in Hobbs. We have the same laws in Farmington. We have the same laws in Albuquerque." So it's compact writing. And I quote, "The composition, the composition of the city council changes the way the law's being enforced in Las Cruces." Would you agree with that? Whether you don't, it's up to you. But this is his thought process as the chairman of the Senate Judiciary Committee. So what is he saying? Is that if any of these individuals sit in front of you, get elected, those individuals that sit in City Hall, he is saying, "Talk to them. Talk to these people right here, because they're the ones that impact crime in the community." You agree with it? Whether you don't, it's up to you. Thank you.
Okay, really, it started. Keep thinking of the questions you want to ask. But I'm gonna throw out the first question. First question. And this will be from anybody who wants to raise their hand and be the first one to answer. And before I do this, where's the other microphone?
Back here. Right here.
Because Karen's gonna run around giving the candidates the microphone, so it's called the talking stick. They can only have one of them talking at a time. So, first question. Concerning the current medical care in this community and the fact that doctors are leaving to set up offices elsewhere, we're going only as far as El Paso, just across the state line, due to increasing malpractice insurance costs and litigious atmospheres here. What solutions do you have for the senior communities' worries about their health care? Who would like to answer that question?
So, John, John goes, "So, I believe we're in a healthcare and behavioral healthcare crisis in our area. When you talk about behavioral healthcare professionals, we only have two for every 1,000 residents in Las Cruces. It takes six to eight weeks to get an appointment, and it's getting worse. We are short doctors that are retiring, doctors that are getting frustrated with the malpractice tort reform process that we have in New Mexico. So we have missions. We have good doctors here, but working with insurance and working with malpractice makes it more difficult to practice here in New Mexico. We're so near the border of Texas and also near enough to Arizona, where doctors are getting recruited out of here. Back to the behavioral health piece, we're kind of in a cycle. Uh, this is what I'm gonna do in my campaign, is recruit more behavioral healthcare professionals, more providers here. Uh, and also provide them, you know, those are also the jobs that I want to create. We need clinics here so that our students, our kids, they get educated, they get trained, and then they go to Colorado. Okay? Um, we have opportunities for them, not just to learn their craft here, but also to practice it here.
With the shortage of, which is still mind-boggling, of 481 doctors, there is a shortage of nurses. When you want to go to the ER and they say, "We don't have any beds," that is code for, "We don't have the manpower. We don't have the nurse power." And with a 911 situation, you have a senior that is having a heart attack or a stroke. And they're going to be dying at the ER. And that is, we definitely need to hire out and bring more doctors, nurses. Also, lab techs, labs are, we're in a shortage there. You know, trying to get screened is just unbelievable. And then one neurologist for the whole city, eighty patients a day. I don't know how that doctor does it. We need manpower. And we definitely need to create opportunities of job for students to get into the field right away, so we can get that treatment for seniors, for veterans, retirees. They need them. So I want to advocate and fight for that. Thank you.
Well, I guess one of the things that baffles me is that close to these hospitals are so close to New Mexico State the branch. I don't understand why they can't partner and have like an intern, where basically, once those people start working there and they finish working there, they can turn around and have a job there. It's like, we have to be smart with this, but we also need to figure out why. Why is the insurance so high? Why is the malpractice so high? And that's gonna take people going up to Santa Fe and asking those hard questions. You know what I'm saying? I don't want to go there and high-five everything. We really need to find out why, if we are in Las Cruces, New Mexico, why it is so hard for a doctor, or why it's so hard for us to get doctors here and for us to keep them here. So those are the questions that I would ask.
Well, first things first, the physicians are businesses. And it's not, our city's not attractive to these physicians at all. Because, one, we have a rising crime statistic. Two, these physicians that are coming over here with their kids see our public school systems, and they don't like the public school systems. They don't enjoy, they don't think that their kids are gonna be successful over here too as well. So the first thing that we need to do is make our city attractive to these physicians. And that's upgrading the infrastructure. That's being tough on the crime. That's being, uh, that's being supportive to our law enforcement too as well, to make sure that we bring these physicians over here too as well. The second thing is, we need to lobby in Santa Fe. We need to go up there. I haven't heard of any of our city councillors going up there and asking those tough questions, like Mr. Black said. We have to go up there, and we not only have to ask those questions, but we have to force them to answer those questions too as well. And we have to force them to answer why the insurance is so high. Why are we so unattractive to these doctors? And how can we bring them back? And that's the first thing we need to do.
Yeah, I would say the city has lobbying force, and we need to leverage it. Uh, we pay a full-time lobbyist to lobby every session of the state legislature. And ultimately, the malpractice stuff, the GRT stuff, uh, the city could knock our GRT off of medical care, which maybe we want to do, absent state action. Uh, but then they still have 5% that they've got to pay for the state. So I think we really need to use our platform as the second-largest city in New Mexico and say, "Hey, we have a problem here with our citizens, and we need our state representatives to take action and get these things done." And it's not like it's not known. Uh, the doctors know what they need and why they're leaving. And they tell people, and they tell people really loudly. Uh, and we need to make sure that we're echoing that message and that it be heard.
In a nutshell, it's a very easy solution to solve. Number one, New Mexico is a Medicaid state, period. That's set up at the legislature, at the state, at the senate, and the house level. Everybody in here, every single person in here, if you called all of those people, every single one of those people, at least three days a week, I guarantee you, we would get some effort. It's not going to change. City council, city council in what our job description is, is a municipal. All of this is designated at the legislative level by the governor, by the senate, by the house. And who are we controlled by? By the Democratic Party. So let's, we need to get aggressive. We need to get involved. There's a lot of people saying, a lot of people, "Well, this, and what about this?" It's horrible to see all those doctors leaving. It's horrible. It's just, it's horrible. It's because the Medicaid reimbursement rate, here's the initial thing that made them run for different states, is because she even dropped the Medicaid reimbursement rate. She wants less money from the federal government because New Mexico has so much money, the state. And where do they get that money from? From gas and oil. So we, as individuals, as citizens of this state, we need to lobby for ourselves, lobby for our grandparents, and everybody here. Thank you.
Questions? Anybody else? Questions?
I have a question. This is, I'm a retired nurse. Is this, I'm a retired nurse, and I know that, I think I'm right, that in this state, the doctors have to pay grocery receipts taxes. And I don't know that, I don't think all states have to do that. So that's one thing that's been going on in this state for a long time, is that the doctors have to pay grocery receipts tax every quarter. That's not much of an incentive, because that adds up pretty quick. Uh, also, I think the doctors are reimbursed lower in this part of the state than they are in other parts of the state. Now, I'm not sure if that's true, but I believe that's true, that the reimbursement in this part of the state is less, is a lot less. So...
Question?
The question is, how can you recruit doctors with that going on? I mean, that's been going on a long time.
Anybody?
Well, I'm gonna agree with what he said earlier, but I think, once again, just my personal, I think when we have people go up to Santa Fe, we worry about shaking hands and not getting stuff done. I mean, I personally, I really don't know the governor personally. So what she thinks of me, I probably wouldn't care. But if it was to make it better for the people of this area, I think that's what my job is. And yeah, I might be a lonely, you know, city councillor, but so what? I'm a voice. I'm a citizen of New Mexico, and she needs to hear from me. But she needs to hear from me unadulterated. We don't need to go up there and tell her how nice her dress looks, and I like her hair like that. I think that's one of the problems, that we're going up there and we're trying to, you know, we're trying to be their friend. We really need to go up there and let our voices be heard, but not just one person. We need to get the collective. If we gotta go in there and look like we in Earth, Wind &amp; Fire, I say everybody go in there and start talking for the citizens of Las Cruces, New Mexico. If we don't, once again, we're gonna be kicking this can down the street.
Being an advocate for the citizens, for the constituents, getting information, getting everybody's concern, putting it down, and having a petition. When you go there with names and people's information, and you're there, and you're like, "We need doctors. We need medical professionals to take care of everybody." And when we are in this hopelessness situation, talk is just talk. When you walk there and you're like, "I am here to represent our citizens, our residents, the young, the seniors, the veterans." You get those doors, and you pound down, and you start voicing all those reasons, all those situations. I am your solution. Thank you.
So one of the things that we could do in the short term is to have a compact agreement. So some states have a compact agreement where a doctor, like for example, from Colorado, can practice here, to help us out temporarily. That's not the long-term solution, but it is a short-term solution. Uh, that doctor can practice in Arizona, in Texas. And for some reason, we have that artificially set up here in New Mexico where that's a limitation. We don't have those compacts. But we have other different taxes and the different processes that make it difficult to practice medicine. Doctors, they just want to take care of people. They want to take care of people. They've worked long and hard for their medical school, and they want to be paid as well. Um, so the issue isn't necessarily the doctors, not entirely the attorneys. It's really how the system's set up. So that's not within our jurisdiction. But we can certainly, as, you know, the candidates have mentioned here, we need to lobby and influence and take some of the doctors with us. I, Nicole and I, Nicole's part of my campaign, this is Nicole. Uh, she works, uh, she worked with me with Electronic Caregiver. We're on the Chief Experience Officer and Relations Officer. Uh, she also worked with me in Santa Fe. She was one of my park rangers. We hired about 198 CNAs and nurses, and we paid them well, because it deserved to be paid well. And that's the model that we have. We take care of our employees, they will take care of our patients, they'll take care of our customers. We've got to take care of our doctors. We take care of us.
Attracting these doctors is gonna be a huge task. And again, we have a lobbying forces in Las Cruces, and we pay them to go up there and lobby for us. But as councillors and representatives of our constituents, and especially our people who need health care in this city, we need to go up there ourselves. We need to go up there ourselves and talk to these legislators. And if they don't listen, we need to be proactive instead of reactive. And we need to start thinking of solutions. And one solution is, we have two major hospitals here in Las Cruces. Why are we not partnering directly with them and creating a board that recruits actively doctors that are looking to move and looking to relocate? And we can bring those doctors over here actively with those two hospitals and connecting with them and working with the city directly. I think that's the best solution, instead of being reactive and trying to beg our state legislators going up there. If they say no, and our governor says no, we need to take it into our own hands. And I believe that's the way we're gonna get it done.
Would you go over to the microphone, please?
Oh, I can hear you.
We can't hear you.
I want to know what...
Excuse me, nothing?
That's another question.
But, um, you know, what...
They can hear me? No!
Kill the microphone!
Okay!
All right, so with that said, I want you to go into more specifics about...
So her question is basically, how am I gonna do it? And what specifics am I gonna utilize and...
Testing.
Oh, go ahead.
You're doing good.
Okay, I got it. I got it. Well, like I said, a board. A board that gets together and actually advises us as city councillors. And that board has to be made up of people that work at the hospitals and directors and higher-ups that work at the hospitals, that know and have the resources already and know how to bring these doctors over here. And if we create that board, again, they can advise us on what to do as a city. What are doctors looking for directly? Are they looking for nicer cities? Are they looking for a city that provides more for their kids? Are they looking for nightlife? What are they looking for? What can we provide that will attract these top-notch doctors to Las Cruces? And also, that board will advise us what Albuquerque's doing. Why are they going to Albuquerque consistently? Why are they going to El Paso? We need to ask those questions, and if our legislators aren't gonna answer those, we create a board directly with the two major hospitals, well, three major hospitals that we have here now, and we figure that out proactively. That's how I would do it. I would create a board, and we would talk, and have great discussions and transparency with these people.
So, yeah, I mean, we know, we have a good dialogue in town. We've got doctors who are very frustrated. Getting them to express their concerns is very important. Uh, but I'll, I'll mention that for all the talk about grassroots and going to the state, the person who, you can, you know, if you want something to do, and if we want something to do, Juan mentioned Senator Cervantes. He is one of the most powerful people in the state legislature. And if we want to see this change, he's the guy to talk to. Um, if we want to see interstate compacts, which is hugely, that's hugely important. I have a family member who is getting some out-of-state medical care. And we came back to Las Cruces, and they had a doctor's appointment, and her doctor was like, "I can't renew your prescription because I'm not licensed in New Mexico. It's walk 100 miles across the border." Um, and, you know, that just sends everybody scrambling for care, and that's terrible. But we need to lobby, lobby the state, come up with our own solutions. If we can't get it from the state, we do have a dedicated health care fund in the city that's funded by our leases with the hospitals. Um, and we can use some of that money to help out. But yeah, let's lobby, and if you want to get up and do something tomorrow, call Senator Cervantes. Uh, he can get it done.
I'm not changing what my direction was. Yeah, I believe, I believe in the, uh, the strategy that one times two times 10 times 20 times 30 times 40 people getting involved. Forty people getting involved. And it doesn't matter in what capacity you are. It doesn't matter your racial makeup. It doesn't matter your socioeconomic background. If you, if everybody is going on the same direction, we may not, we don't necessarily have to know each other. Like what Mr. Black was talking about here a little while ago. We need to get involved with people. We need to get involved with people that are going the same direction so that we can multiply our numbers, multiply our numbers. Because in all reality, think about these councils, think about all these people that are in office. What is it that they do really want? They want to stay in office, is what they really want. And what we need to do is galvanize people. People need to get involved with the Republican Party here locally, get involved with various groups, and march. Go, go with him. I encourage everybody to go with him, because I'm gonna be there. I'm gonna be, I encourage you. Thank you.
All right, here I go again with this common sense stuff. How long has this problem been going on? So it seems like the people in charge ain't really in charge. I mean, because even if, let's go to my military days. When the army wanted you in the military, they gave you all these advances. Uh, and you know, "Hey, if you want to go to California, we're gonna send you to California." If we've been going over the same thing over and over, you know, we always say this thing, "Man, ain't no use in beating a dead horse." So it sounds like the people in charge ain't really in charge because they're not paying attention to the stuff that's going on up in here. So I agree with Isaiah 100%. I got a personal story. My sister was trying to get a job down here. She's a registered nurse. So what they promised her on the phone, and then what they promised her in person, was two different things. But how would we know that if we don't have a board to look at that kind of stuff? Because at the VA, we always talk, and we come up with the best solutions to start getting people in. And I think that's what we need to start doing here. We need to get that board together, but we need to be more involved. Because for some odd reason, you're not gonna tell me if you offer a doctor, a x-ray technician, a certain amount of money, they're not gonna come here. At the end of the day, it's about money. And right now, I don't think we're doing, as far as the city's concerned, what we need to do to get these people here. Sometimes we gotta spend a dollar. We gotta spend a dollar. I mean, every time we look up, we talk about the grocery receipt tax. So how much exactly grocery receipt tax do we have? And if we're spending all this money on libraries and all this other stuff, we can't give these people bonuses to come here and take care of our elderly people and our younger people. And once again, that's just my common sense popping in. I'm sorry.
Um, I have a question.
I have a question. Okay. Do you think there are enough police on the police force in Las Cruces? And do you think they have the resources they need? And the legislature took away qualified immunity from the police. And what would you do to support our police to make sure they, that they know you've got their back?
Well, that's an easy one. First of all, if you ask me right now if the city council has the police back, I'm gonna say no. Uh, giving up the resources to help somebody doing what they're supposed to do is, to me, is just common sense. I mean, Chief Story need all the help, and most of it is money and recruiting people in. And for us not to give him his resources, then to turn around and be mad at him because he's not doing his job to his capability, that's like the oxymoron statement. And the best way to sit there and show the police that you have their back is to work with them, to talk to them. I mean, they have the mark on the blocks. You know, go visit the mark on the blocks. Chief Story will open the door and talk to you anytime. He's very transparent. So now what we have to do is return the favor, have his back, and also be transparent with the police force. So that's what I would do.
One thing that we need to do to support our police is pay them more. Again, like I had made in my statement, my opening statement, they're the 14th highest-paid department in the state of New Mexico, and we're the second-largest city. It's ridiculous. These officers don't get paid enough. And also, in talking directly with the officers at the Police Officers Association, they let me know that they want more training. They need more funding for more training. But our city decides to spend millions and millions of dollars on homeless shelters. And that is where we're lacking. If we're gonna fix this crime issue, we gotta fix our department, and we gotta help our department, because they are the head. They are the first line of defense when it comes to public safety. And in terms of making a great image for our officers, we need to also expand units, like the community service unit, the community outreach unit. That needs to be expanded. We need more officers. And to answer your question directly, do we have enough officers? Absolutely not. Absolutely not. Even at the amount of officers that we're allocated for, Chief Story has said that that still is not enough for the amount that our city is growing consistently. And we need more officers directly and consistently. And we also need to partner with more recruitment programs too as well to draw in these officers, to go directly to the schools. And instead of pointing them out towards a direction of violence, we need to point them out in the direction of public service through the police departments. That's how we do it.
So we all have ideas. One of the things that I've learned in leadership is definitely go for those ideas and make the change, or try to make the change. One important piece, though, while you're doing that, is also listen to subject matter experts. Uh, and I appreciate, you know, because I've talked to Police Rack and File, to Chief Story as well. I appreciate some of the candidates here also talking directly to Chief Story to really understand what they need. Because I can say, "Well, you need this," or "You should have a police officers..." or you should have police officers in every neighborhood so that those neighborhoods get to know the police. That's one of my ideas. But I've gotta listen to Chief to see what works and what's gonna have the most impact. Crime, in some areas, it's going down. But I really wanna focus on the victim and the families. Even though that number has been reduced, those families are affected a hundred percent of the time. That family will not be the same after they've been victims of crime. And so we need to mitigate as much as we can. To answer your question specifically, there are, like, immunity, the competency, juvenile, there are several laws, again, not in our jurisdiction, but definitely we could work to modernize those laws so that it's easier to do law enforcement, okay? We need to have behavioral health to proactively prevent that crime from happening. Right? We need to have drug cessation plans. But we also need to back it up with the laws that makes sense. And so it's a complete approach. It's not one solution, one magic bullet that's gonna make the difference. It's gonna take all of us together in several different actions. And I have that comprehensive plan that will work.
One of the things that I keep hearing over and over again is when a crime happens, and an incident happens, they catch him and release him. And a lot of people are fed up. They're fed, they're mad, they're angry. They're like, well, what does it take? How many people need to get violated? How many people need to die? And they're just angry. My solution is this. We continue to talk to the police department, to Chief Story, and say, "How can we help you? Tell us the problems. Tell us the issues so we can be a solution." And that is, but a lot of people, they're just fed up. And they're afraid. They're afraid to go at night in certain places. They're afraid to go in locations at certain places. So people are living in fear. Thank you.
Do you have a next question? Or will I have any answers? And then what, the next question?
I support the police department a hundred and ten percent. I believe that they are foundational precept of any civilized society. And we, the issue of qualified immunity is, when I go back to my original answer, it's gonna take all of us together, all of us together, all of us together, holding the legislature accountable for that. How, do you think the superintendent of schools or any of the teachers that they work in in a situation where they're not covered? Where I work, we're all covered. But the police department's not covered? It's one of the most deadly jobs? Lord in heaven, I cannot. But it will take all of us. It will take all of us a concerted effort, calling them, emailing them. And I don't believe in all of this, you know, protesting across the street nonsense. But I have seen, through CCIA and other organizations, the Republican Party, I have seen phone banks very successful to getting legislators changing their minds on certain issues because they could not believe how many people called. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll go quick. So to answer the question directly, I think we're funded for 238 or 240 or so police officers. We've got just over 200. So not enough. There's over 50, 60 square miles that they gotta cover in the city. So we gotta get that up. As far as the, you know, catch-and-release issue, a lot of the issue, actually, if you look at the court cases, is that people go in and something is wrong with the paperwork. And the judge is like, hey, man, I really wanna hold this person, but I can't because the i's aren't dotted, the t's aren't crossed. So, you know, making sure that we're on the DA's office and that we have administrative support for the police department to make sure that, you know, we're getting all the paperwork stuff. If we can't change the state laws, you know, let's make sure that we're following them to a T. And then the other part of that is that there is a genuine concern in the state about jailing people for minor crimes or jailing juveniles for, you know, minor things. But we also don't have an alternative. So we need the redirection programs and rehabilitation stuff so that if we decide, you know, we decide as a society that we don't just wanna lock people up all the time, we need something else to do rather than just putting them back out on the street.
Ramona said, and this young man over here said, because I did work down at the Doniana Detention Center. I realized the detention center, however, it's like going for vacation. I worked there, and they're in, that Thursday, they're out by Friday, like you said. If they would come a little bit harder on whether they're mild or harsh crimes or things like that, they need to know that they're not there for vacation. They are there to do their time, whether they have stolen something, whether they've been battered or anything. They need to know that they're there to do that time, and we're not to babysit them while they are there. So, with that being said, yes, we do need more training. We do need more education. And, I mean, it's just, it's just...
Well, I'm gonna make up my own question. So basically, one of the things that I wanna institute when I'm in city council is I really believe we need a curfew. There is no reason that these kids are out at 11, 12 o'clock at night. 'Cause I'm old, right? And when the light came on on the thing outside, you had to be in the house. You know what I'm saying? And then I don't think these kids have no consequences for their actions. I don't know about y'all, but I grew up on these things called whuppings. When my momma spanked me, and it was consequences for my actions. Now, I'm not saying we need to jail these kids. That's not the right thing to do. But they have something in Tucson, Arizona, where they have Kids Court. And they make these kids get out, and they do basically manual labor, you know, paint the graffiti walls, or they pick the grass or something. There has to be some kinda consequences to their actions. But at the end of the day, that also fall back on their parents. Because these kids are not raised right. You know, like I said, I'm not gonna say I was raised with a whole bunch of money, but I was raised with a whole bunch of love. And when I had a love in my house, it made me wanna spread love. I don't know what these kids are raised with, and they feel like right now they gotta go out and pull out a pistol to shoot somebody. So it has to be some consequences to their actions. And I also think that right there will help the police police more. Don't nobody want them wa- catch and release? That's old right now. We have to change that.
Next question? But let Daniel, Daniel's next.
This church building has been the victim of several crime incidents. And I just wanted to ask what your plan was to ensure that citizens and their neighbors could be safe from criminality?
One thing that the deputy chief was talking to us about a couple nights ago was proactive policing and evidence-based policing. And one thing is, is that we need to make sure we staff our police department to make sure that they are able to patrol these areas that have higher crime rates, especially if they're over here damaging our churches. We need to make sure there is an officer here to respond as quick as possible. And then we also need to support the real-time crime center. The real-time crime center, with all the cameras that we're gonna be placing around the city, is going to help the response and hopefully prevent a lot of crimes when we see suspicious people walking around buildings like a church too as well. And it'll protect our holy places and make sure that we hold these people accountable and make sure they don't do it again too as well.
So, yeah, the nonprofit that I work with has also been vandalized several times and had windows busted out. And the sad thing about that is that the last time window was busted out, it was somebody who was just looking for a warm place to sleep. And he didn't have any alternative than to break the window and walk across the street and hang out till the police showed up. And then they arrested him and sent him to jail. And nobody was helped in this situation. He got a warm, but probably cold bed in the detention center. And we had a broken window, and we have another crime staff. So, you know, really addressing kinda the root causes of that petty crime is a big thing. And then also something, in District 3 in particular, we have the MRA funds. And that kinda frees up a lot of money in the city to help take care of the victims of this crime. You know, the church has its windows broken out. The city can actually, since we made that designation, the city can actually use some funds to go and say, hey, we'll fix your window. You know, this crime is a society problem. And as a community, we really need to take responsibility for the consequences and help out the victims as well.
And the MRA funds are a really good thing too as well, to fix the windows and everything like that. But what we need to talk about is prevention. We need to prevent the crime from happening in the first place, not award these businesses after a window's already been broken and consistently broken on a daily basis, or even a weekly basis. So, and that's the big thing that we need to support. Instead of funding after the crime is committed, let's prevent the crime. Use the MRA to make sure we push the homeless individuals out of certain areas and push them into certain areas that, you know, we will allow camping, and we will allow people to actually live and sleep. For example, I was presented a camping ordinance a couple of weeks ago, and I am in full support of said camping ordinance because the city has a hundred lots that are vacant, and we are not utilizing them. And those hundred lots, we should have used one of them to allow camping for these homeless individuals, rather than have them camping everywhere else around town, around these businesses where it is warm, where it is safe. Let's have that, let's give them their own space, and their own space that is up to code too as well.
What I, I revert back to the same thing again, about getting involved, getting involved. Get involved with the Republican Party. Get involved with any of your churches. Get involved in some capacity. But how I, I'm gonna change this up a bit is when the counselor, whoever you elect, whoever you elect, support them. Support them when they're in office, when they're trying to do the best they can for their people. In terms of the job description, in terms of the job description for the city councilor, the head human resource officer is the city manager. And what I mean by this is city manager is in charge of the police. We cannot necessarily go and tell the police department, yeah, oh, I'm a city councilor, and you need to kinda do what I say. Yes, it kinda rolls down in some respects, but that's not, that's not how it's operated. That's not how it's operated. So we would have to go through the city manager and tell that if the city manager is not relaying the concerns of the citizenry, then we need to get rid of that city manager. That's all there is to it. And let's get us another one, who will support the police department, give them the resources, and he can relay that to the police department. And you know what? The citizens here in Las Cruces are tired. They are tired of all of their businesses getting vandalized. They're tired, they can't even go to Albertson's. They can't go to Walmarts, hit in the parking lot or whatever, and do documentation without being harassed. And they want these people arrested and taken wherever they're gonna go. So that's my view on that, is take that in regards to support from the community as well as letting the city councilor run that course and even hold that city council responsible as well. Thank you.
Okay, after this, we have time for two more questions. So we'll make, give you the answers.
Thank you for that word from our sponsor. Co-sponsor. First of all, I wanna say I'm so sorry that those of you who do attend here that you went through that. That is very difficult. My dad was a pastor over seventeen churches. And one of his churches about this size was also, they stole the musical instruments and vandalized a church. A church, you know, and that's absolutely not acceptable. And so obviously, the service that Sunday was very heavy. Again, one of the symptoms, I think that what makes sense is is a comprehensive plan and like to get a task force together so that we bring all stakeholders in, listen to them, and figure out, you know, what the best course of action is. We know staffing, we need to look at that. We weren't at 75,000 residents in 2000. We are over 117,000 today. And that's just an estimate. So we need to make sure they were staffed properly, not just in headcount, but the way it's spread. I know that it was mentioned that there's smart policing, and I think that makes sense, using technology to send police or have a patrol in hotspots. I believe that's important. So we need to support the real-time crime center to do smart policing as well. And we also need to figure out a way to help young adults have activities, whether it's festivals, and if you get together, have a sense of community, whether it's activities. But it's, again, it's gonna be a comprehensive plan, and it's gonna take all of us together to make this change. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we do have a common denominator, both in our health situation, our medical situation, and then also in our crime and safety. The ratio is off. We have a lot of residents, constituents, that they need, they wanna feel safe, and they wanna get medical care. And this is something that we need to bring attention to and awareness to. And we do have a crisis on both sides. And how can I be a solution? Talking to the experts. Asking the questions. What is it today? What are the issues? What are the concerns? What are the problems? That way, we are having conversations with those groups so we can, we can solve problems with those experts. 'Cause those are the experts that we can help to get the answers and solutions.
I'm gonna make this real quick. Okay, first of all, it goes back to what I said earlier. We need programs for kids to get them off the street. And we also need programs for the homeless to help them out, whether it's mental health, behavior health, alcohol problems, whatever. But next week, if you're one of those people that have been broken in, I have already set up a meeting with business owners who have had their business broken into, and also the police. 'Cause I'm sure a bunch of business owners don't even know about the MRA. So I set that up. If y'all wanna join me, just reach out to me, and I'll invite you also.
Can we go? I think public input is important. I think it's great. I absolutely love it this evening and appreciate you guys coming. I really appreciate the time of the day that this meeting is. So, it's been coming. I just wanna pretend for a moment you all won, and you're all on the town council. And you're all getting together for your first meeting. And you wanna decide on public input. Now, there's gonna be a group that say, I want as few working-class, taxpaying people shown as possible. So let's make our meeting time kind of one to three while they're at work. Okay? Another, say, well, I want the homeless, I want those that don't work, I want the gender confused, the pronoun confused to show up. So what would be a good time for that? Well, I thought it'd be one to three, wouldn't it? I want all of your opinions on what time of the day you think is best to include everybody, especially the people who pay taxes and pay all the bills that you guys are raising up.
Thank you for your question. And this is something I, I mean, I'm passionate about. I've sent letters, I've sent emails to our current councilors multiple times, trying to change the time and the day. It almost feels like our city council is scared of their constituents.
Yes.
And don't wanna hear from them, right? And so I've mentioned many times that it should be after working hours or even on a weekend where we get as many people as possible. Yes, public participation's gonna take a lot longer, but it's something we need to hear as representative politicians. We need to listen to our constituents. We needed to listen to the people that we serve and the people that elected us and hired us. So I believe Saturday or Friday after working hours, when a lot of people can join[1744.88]
So I believe Saturday or Friday after working hours, when a lot of people can join, and we can have the most public participation as possible, especially with the big decisions that we are making too as well.
Yeah, so one of the things that actually got me interested in participating in the city is that we used to have community meetings, and they were after, they were after hours, they were at 6, they were in, you know, a convenient place in the district for everyone to go. And what was really cool about that is, you know, the city council meeting is a business meeting. Like, as counselors, we're there to approve X, Y, and Z, hear reports from people. The community meetings were a really good opportunity to hear from constituents, and they're specifically designed to do that. So you probably, I imagine a lot of you folks went to the police department town hall, I recognize some faces from there, you know, where you get to really go and engage with the city, and most importantly, they're there specifically to listen to you. And, and there can also be a dialogue back and forth. You know, it was great, we have an open mic, people could ask their questions, the various city departments could respond, you could talk directly to departments that might not be at a normal city council business meeting. You know, if you've got a problem with your potholes, well, there's somebody guaranteed at the, at the community meeting to be from Public Works. And if Public Works doesn't have something to present to the council that day, you know, for a regular business meeting, well, Public Works guy's not gonna be there. So I think, you know, doing that stuff after hours when it's convenient, providing childcare for people who need that, that's all a great way to encourage participation.
Yeah, we, we need to be accessible as city counselors. So after work, what I want to do is schedule a town hall meeting on a regular basis with my district, because we'll have specific issues in the district that may not affect the other districts as well, so I think those are important. What I want to do too also is, and you saw in the bulletin, I want to establish a constituent services team, a group of a few employees who track what actually comes in, and tracks whether it was resolved or not, what the issues are, that way we have some data. Okay, so 100 people called in because of potholes on roadrunner, or whatever, we know that's an issue, or, you know, 100 people called because of this, because we sometimes call individual departments, and that, that information is kind of scattered. As a leadership team, we don't know what some of the trends are with this. And I want a full transparency, where that report goes out to the constituents, and you say, okay, here were the top three issues this month or this quarter, city council and city counselors handled. So I think the transparency piece, the tracking piece and the data will be very helpful in us leading Las Cruces to a different place.
First of all, I'm gonna agree with what Isaiah, what he said. We need maximum participation, but also we need a rule of engagement when we get to the city council too. I saw one city council meeting, and I thought I was looking at a reality TV show. One thing that we are not there for, or we are there for, we are there for the people. And for us to go back and forth and call people names and all this other stuff, I think that is totally, totally, totally disrespectful. So I'm, I'm gonna treat you with respect, because I want you to treat me with respect. But one of the first things that I'm gonna do, which I've already done, is talk to the mayor, I thought it was totally wrong, the way some of those city councils was talking to some of the people that was at the, you know, y'all are constituents. We work for y'all, so for us to call y'all names and stuff, actually, I think that's very childish, that's the name I was looking for, so I'll get that fixed.
So I have a, I have a comment question. You represent seven councils. We are the second largest city in the state. You have a loud voice. There's approximately 12 state elected officials in this county, that includes representatives and senators. You have a loud voice, that if you're elected, if that council wanted you, they could talk about malpractice reform, they could talk about juvenile crime, but they refuse to do so because of their political ideology that precludes them from getting involved with those topics. We've had this. My question to all of you, are you going to represent the people, or are you going to represent your party and those that paid to get you elected?
Thank you for the question. This is one thing that I was talking about with my wife. It almost seems like everybody on the city council is very, very best friends with each other. And I don't agree with that. We are not there to be best friends, we are not there to hold hands and sing kumbaya. We are there to serve our constituents within our districts. And if one counselor from District 1 agrees and says, we should be doing this, but my constituents from District 3 say, hey, you need to vote no for this, I'm gonna vote no for that. I'm not there to make friends, I'm there to serve my constituents. I'm there to serve the people who hired me, because I will never forget that is everyone that voted for me hired me there, hired me to be there and hired me to serve them.
I have my own values, and the most important thing though, being on council, is to listen to people. We have, have a community meeting, and people say, hey, we want X, Y, and Z, then, then that's my job. And then also, standing up, you know, Juan makes a very good point, and I think that as a city, we have that power, and, and as elected leaders, we have that peer relationship with the other electeds, and we can say, hey, you know, our, the city feels this way, and, you know, we're both elected, and here's, here's what we want you to do. The city puts its money where its mouth, can put its money where its mouth is. We've got our lobbyists, we have multiple lobbyists, and we can say, you know what, our constituents need help with healthcare, we need help with malpractice reform, or interstate compacts, or lobby the PRC to keep our electric bills down. The city is the largest consumer of electricity, in case you didn't know, and there's, you know, we have the power to really lobby for, for all our constituents to, to have what they want in the face of state agencies.
So one time, I was responsible for 6,300 employees. I was privileged and blessed to lead that many people. I couldn't have a bad day, could not have a bad day, and miss something or mismanage our budgets. It was, you know, they were multimillion dollar budgets, and so I had to always be on my game, because I was responsible not only for that individual employee, but his or her family as well. Right? And so as, as city counselors, that's, that's the responsibility that we will also need to take in, that we need to listen. With, with that many employees, I wasn't always right. I made decisions, and I had ideas, but sometimes it's a matter of listening. There are over 600 employees here, and 1,100 in Albuquerque, some more in Las Vegas, who worked with me. Research me, ask, you know, what kind of, I have two former employees here, but I asked them what kind of employer I was, what kind of boss was John. It's about working together. We, you know, let's, let's figure out what's good for Las Cruces, instead of what's good for the Republican Party, what's good for the Democratic Party. Let's figure out what is best for our city. Thank you.
Okay, we have time for one more question, and we're gonna start cleaning up. So Karen, your lovely last question.
I would like to know how you all feel about this transitioning from gas to electric, especially considering gas is a major source, but yeah, income for the state, for our city.
My stance is, the constituents need to have the freedom of choice. Do I, I have a gas car, am I going to get an electric car? Am I going to be skateboarding from A to B? No, I think it's a, it's a freedom of choice, and I think that we need to have that, that freedom to do so.
So I think this situation is another situation, to me, that's wrong with city council. If they really want to make their choice for you guys, they should let you guys make their choice. The same thing like they did with the Realized Las Cruces, look how they went off and got mad, because they didn't agree with your decisions. So at the end of the day, that decision lies on you guys. It is not my job to sit up here and make that personal decision for y'all, because I'm gonna be honest, I'm a Dallas Cowboy fan, I, I'm, even if I'm the city council, I'm not gonna make all y'all watch the Cowboys every Sunday. You know what I'm saying? So to me, if you do not talk to the constituents, and let them make the decision, who are we, just because we sit up in the city council, to make that life-altering decision for you guys.
On this issue, there's several people who went there to, they had a public comment that was sponsored by the city and El Paso Electric. It was possibly two months or so ago, and it was, everybody that was attending, myself included, thought that it was gonna be a Q and A. There was no Q and A, or no Q and A. And what was in here in the city was about 12 little stations, that you had to read and kind of evolve about yourself, and how carbon futures were gonna be damaging the fossil environment, and on and on and on. So, long story short, there was two people who were dressed like Pullman, electric, electric Pullman, and I went to one of them, and these were the guys, but they were not answering questions. But I asked this one guy, I said, let me ask you a question, I said, you know, of course, how the federal race has been, and I said, how do you hope to achieve all of these, all of this stuff without the use of federal dollars? How are you going to do that? And he goes, well, we won't be able to. Then I asked him, I said, then why are you doing this? Why are you doing this? Because I know you're gonna give municipal dollars, you'll get state dollars, but you're gonna have to have federal dollars. This is his exact statement. And this guy works for, for a, El Paso Electric. He goes, you know what? He goes, I ain't getting rid of my gas. That's exactly what he said. He goes, I ain't getting rid of my gas. And I said, so why are they doing it then? He goes, because they are committed. Was his exact statement.
Who are they committed to?
No, no, he, no, in terms of whoever's pushing that agenda, that agenda, they're committed to that agenda. And so the only way to make them uncommit from that agenda is public outcry, individuals getting involved, whether it be with the Republican Party, with veterans of foreign wars, it doesn't matter. You need to say something. Thank you.
This again comes down to listening to your constituents, and allowing them to come to you and speak their voice. And I've talked to a majority of people, because again, I'm a real estate broker, and this comes up a lot. All the homes, the new homes now are all electric, and a lot of people hate that. They go towards the older homes because they're all gas. And so if we listen to the public outcry of our people, we would not make the same mistake we did with Realized Las Cruces. We would put this on the ballot, we would allow our people to vote on something that's this large, so we can hear their voices directly, rather than making a decision for them and saying, hey, this is great for you, you're gonna enjoy this. We're not, a majority of us aren't gonna enjoy it. We need to put this on the ballot, and we need to make sure that the voices of these people, of our constituents, are heard.
Yeah, so there's, I think there's a hard, there are a couple of hard realities about gas infrastructure. One is that the older homes have gas, a lot of the new homes have gas. The city, a long time ago, passed a resolution, not an ordinance, so that said, that we, we kind of want to move away from gas. But in the meantime, we've kept building new homes. And those are commitments that the city has made. So if you build a home today, I have family who's moving here, and one of them bought a new-built home, it's got gas. She's buying that home that has gas, based on the fact that the city's gonna provide the gas service. And so, you know, we have these commitments to, to that service, that we need to fulfill, regardless of, of, you know, what comes down the pipe, literally, in gas. The other part is that there are hard realities about gas, and there are, things are changing, and new appliances are coming online that are more efficient, and people are moving to them. Whether you want to or not is your decision, but it's happening, and people are going to those. And so what we're gonna start seeing, you know, I think very long-term, in terms of sustainability of the budget, and as we go further on, and more people start moving away from gas, as is their choice, it'll become more expensive to maintain the infrastructure for those who are staying. So the city needs to be prepared to support that, and, and, and help people so that we don't, we don't lose the service.
Do you think you have the electrical grid to support all-electric?
Okay, we have, we're really out of time, but I was just asked to ask one more question, and that is, just simply, is there a chance, if any of you are elected to the board, that you might reconsider a repeal of Realized Las Cruces?
Absolutely, yes, 100%.
Good, good enough. Okay. So, good luck, ladies and gentlemen, from your all tonight. I am Joan Shearer, I've been your host tonight. I would like to thank Lisa Bertoni, Matthew Barrett, Judy Weigername, Lisa Brown, Mary Alice Conick, and Alice, oh, actually, you weren't helping, but you were close. If I missed somebody, I can't, oh, I'm sorry, Karen, Karen and Marie Agar, 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 excuse me, Agar. Oh, and sorry, Kathy Boyer. Did I miss anybody? Okay, thank you very much for your help, we enjoyed your answers, makes me feel really good.
Thank you for having us.
I wish you all, I wish you all a good night. Thank you very much. Good luck.